Hey, hey, it's Drew Speaks. Turn it up, we spilling tea. When the drama hit the streets, you know where you gotta be. Messy but classy, yeah, I keep it real. Bringing all the news, let's talk, let's spill. Shades so sharp, might need a shield. When Drew speaks, best believe it's sealed. Got some facts, what's the deal? Keep it raw, keep it trill. Ain't no cap, just what's real. Hit that like, tell me how you feel. Oh, you ain't hurt, let me break it down. Drew got the scoop, yeah, we run the town. Last drama truth in the mix. Stay locked in, yeah, we too legit. From the streets to the tweets, what's hot, what's weak? Spilling all the tea, yeah, Drew gon' speak. No sugar coke, just...
Hey, everybody, hello, hello, hello. Welcome to Drew Speaks. Welcome to Drew Speaks. Happy Tuesday, I wanna first by saying that happy Tuesday, y'all. Today is a great day, it's a good day, right? Today, I want to jump right into it. So today, we will be going over Thornton Township's special board meeting with the trustees and supervisor Harris. And so, as you guys are coming in, make sure you hit the like button, hit the subscribe button, and hit the share button. Let everyone know that we are on live. And so, listen, I wanna get into it, I wanna get into this. Again, today, we will be going over the special board meeting of Thornton Township. I believe they are wrapping up the budget hearing. And they were just basically discussing the budget. And the residents was able to give their concerns, the resident, the residents was able to give their, you know, thoughts on things and everything like that. And so, I believe at the meeting now, they're getting ready to have the board meeting. I believe the meeting that starts at six o'clock, they're getting ready to have the board meeting, but not only that, but vote. They're getting ready to vote on the budget. This is the budget that they tried to get it passed when Tiffany Hager was in office, right? They just couldn't come to an agreement and create a budget. And so, they doing it today. They doing it today. And so, I think it's ironic, I think that it is something different, if you will, for the lack of terms of words, if you will. And so, I wanna kinda go over some of them budgets, some of them budgets, and just dig into it right before the meeting is set to happen. And so, again, as you guys come in, hit the like button, hit the share button, and hit the subscribe button. Shout out to Alicia Nicole, again, shout out to Alicia Nicole. We will be using her footage today to tune right into the Thornton Township's meeting. And so, let's do this, let's get this, they are already there, let's get it on the screen. Let's dive into this. Let's dive into this. Okay, so we gotta mute it. Let's see what's going on. I will say that Robert Hunt, his voice is really low. His voice is very low, I believe. I believe we are on Facebook, I believe we are on YouTube. I believe we are. And so, if you're watching from Facebook, if you're watching from YouTube, welcome to the channel. Make sure we hit the like button, hit the share button, and we hit the subscribe button. See, tonight is gonna be a shit show. Oh, I feel like, me personally, I feel, I feel like, let me pause this. Because they're getting ready, so what's getting ready to happen for the ones that just came into the show? Thornton Township is having their budget hearing tonight. And what's, what's crazy about this is that this is a budget hearing that we all been waiting on, right? We all have been waiting on this hearing, especially when the Hager administration was in. We was waiting on this. They should've known to give us this. So let's get back into, let's get back into this. I'm sorry, I don't know if it's, I don't think it's my internet. I think it's what's going on there. And I'm sorry, let me do this. As we're looking at that, let me do this really quick. Because I don't like how, I don't like how this is sharing. I do not like the visual of it. I don't like, I don't like it. So let's try to, let's try to get a better footage. Let's try to get some better footage. Okay, there we go. Okay, so we got a better, so we got better footage, y'all. I do apologize for that. Shout out to Vivian Allen for her video. I can say, and I will say, Vivian got some, Vivian got some good video, y'all. I gotta give it to her, she got the showing. Let's watch. Let's get into this. So let's, it's about time for them to start the regular board meeting. And I have that here as well. So it sounds to me that the noise that we were hearing to talk about how much of a deficit that Thornton Township is in, it don't sound like, based on the numbers that I heard, it doesn't sound like there's a big deficit. It just don't sound like it. He gave us the numbers. He gave us the numbers, honey.
Right now, go over some of the questions we received from the public.
It seem like, don't nobody wanna be there. So there's 151 staff members within Thornton Township. 151 in place on Thornton Township. Again, as you guys are coming in, make sure you hit the like button, make sure you hit the subscribe button, and make sure you hit the share button, let everybody know that we are on live. Let me know in the comments where y'all watching from as well. Again, y'all said this is gonna be, you say this is, this is gonna be a shit show. I, I kinda feel like it is. I kinda feel like it is, and why? Because... Okay, so I kinda feel like it is, and the reason of being is because this man, the senator, the supervisor, Thornton Township fought so hard for transparency, Thornton Township fought so hard for a better government, why in the hell is Supervisor Harris making almost $205,000 a year? And that's without the bonuses, that's without the perks. If we remember, Tiffany Hager was making that amount. But if we remember, Tiffany Hager inherited a salary. He's on his first sign. If we remember, Tiffany Hager was, she was an appointment to the position. He was elected to the position. And if we remember, Thornton Township had put in a ordinance that stopped that anybody that come in, prior, I mean, following after Tiffany Hager administration, they were always supposed to make the base amount of pay. That's not what's going on. That's not what's going on. The board meeting is supposed to start at six o'clock, they are still going through the proceedings of the budget meetings. All I'm here to say is that Supervisor Harris, you ain't, you ain't supposed to be making that, that amount of money that you're making as a supervisor. And let's remember that Thornton Township is not like a normal municipality. It's a government agency that offer government, that offers, offers government assistance. So school pantry, help with paying your light bill, help with paying your gas bill, help with paying funeral costs. That's what the township is for. And I'm surprised, can I be honest, I'm surprised because you have Chris Gonzalez, you have Mary Avant, you have Valerie Stubbs, you have three people that is very vocal, if you will, about Tiffany Hager's administration. And so, I'm, 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 I'm trying to understand, when is somebody gonna say something about Napoleon Harris? When is somebody gonna say, hey, bro, the amount, the amount of money you making ain't right? Let's see if I can pull up, let's see if I can pull up Napoleon Harris. Let's see if I can get it up. Because I know, I know it's saved to my computer, I know that for a fact. I know I did a laugh about it before. But it's crazy. I'm ready for, I wish if there was a way that we could just skip through to public comments, because I'm really ready to see what the community has to say about this. I'm ready to see what the other trustees have to say about the budget. I know we heard trustee Avant speak earlier, but that wasn't, you know, it wasn't enough for me, if you will. Again, we fought for transparency, we fought for a better government, we fought for a better accountability, if you will. Let me know again where y'all watching from in the comments. I am able to see the comments. So let me know where y'all watching from. Okay, for some reason, I was not able to see, I was not able to see the comments on this screen, but I am able to see it. Damn it, hey, damn it, hey, sister, Mr. Ferrer, how are you? Yes, the salary was questioned on, on WGN. And from my understanding, Supervisor Harris, the guy right here, let me show y'all, the guy right here that the, the mic, the mouse is on, he's in the middle. Uh, the, uh, how can I say, the middle of the table, right there in that split. So how is he collecting his money? WGN, they did do it, they did do a segment on that, I remember. Oh, that's good, Mr. Ferrer, I haven't seen you in a long time, or heard from you, how you doing? I know you're a grandmother, congratulations again. So this is the supervisor that is talking. Tiffany Hager 2.0, allegedly, let me make sure I say that, because you know, in this YouTube world, y'all. And it now ceasing to assist us left and right. Come on, get your words right, sir. Oh, boy, okay, okay, cool. So he's sending 50,000 lunches, but I think, I think that they would meet that, that amount when Tiffany Hager was here. I know that when I call Thornton Township today to get a answer about my four-year request, I asked for, I asked for the payroll, for the full employment of all Thornton Township employees, I asked for all ordinances that has been passed under the Harris administration, and a few other documents that haven't heard anything back. Good thing about it, here in the state of Illinois, they got a certain time to respond. They don't respond in a certain time. I can go downtown, fifty West Washington, and have a judge make them respond. Because Dalton, I asked for some records from Dalton, and they respond, they responded. And actually, they responded, y'all, in a way that you just felt the fresh air, if you will. You just felt the fresh air in Dalton. Just through the communication of email, just through them responding back to my emails, through them answering phone calls, answering questions, if they don't know the information, they was able to get back to me. And that's not what I'm getting through Thornton Township. That's not what Thornton Township giving me. And so, what I believe is that they getting ready to go into the board meeting. See, trustee Gonzalez, you... I'm not liking what I'm hearing. Because if we're focused on the resident, why is the supervisor's salary $200,000 a year? When it's supposed to be around 50-some thousand?
So once again, you know, the focus is off of promotion and more on services. Seniors, another part of the township that's near and dear to my heart. Once again, it's bringing more services to direct to our seniors. I was employed here many, many years ago, and those were the areas mainly that I worked.
Again, as you all are coming into the channel, make sure you hit the like button, hit the subscribe button, let everyone know that we are on live.
You know, I'm glad somebody, a gentleman brought up ice cream, and you know, something, I'll just use that as an example. Once again, it wasn't about ice cream, it was, it wasn't about stopping any services. What it was about how much those things were costing. We didn't have that information, as you can see in this budget, we do have that information now. And that's how we go forward.
I have a question, will that budget be followed?
And that's what it's all about. Now we can be more blessed than I said before. I was never looking to stop any, you know, any of the services, and if anything else, I wanted to increase on. You know, once again, within our meetings, and that's what we're doing here. That's why we are voting on these budgets, and that's why it's crucial that we get these done. You know, I'll go back to the other budget, the general assistance one, you know.
It's crucial that the budget get paid. If I can... The fact of the matter is that I believe that, I truly believe in my heart that these trustees' salaries are increasing on this budget. And that's just me, I could be wrong.
As well, but I think it all comes down to communication, not just us as a board, but us, the residents as well, back before. Information coming our way, information coming our way, that is crucial. And that's all being done, it's being worked on. It's already been said, you know, it's been sixty-three days, things are still being worked on. I'd equated it to kinda like when you're dating somebody for the first time, you gotta get to know each other, see how each other works, and from there, you take it forward, you know, you're not...
No, no, Chris Gonzalez. I don't know, y'all, I ain't feeling this.
And you know, with all that being said, I just wanna thank our supervisor, the rest of the board, the staff, for all their assistance in all this.
I don't agree. I don't agree, y'all, I, I don't agree, I don't agree with that.
And that's kind of the bottom line, and we just kinda take it from there. But we want, I would like it to get to a point where we are just asking a simple question of, why did this cost this amount? Or something simple like that, as opposed to going just, you know, where myself or...
I ain't feeling it. I'm not feeling it. He is just collecting a check. Exactly. That was one of the comments, he's just collecting a check, of course he is. Okay, come on, Valerie Stubbs. You let us know what's going on. Again, that's the ones that just coming into the channel, welcome to Drew Speaks, welcome to Drew Speaks. We are covering Thornton Township, Thornton Township. Board meeting today. That's what we're covering, that's what we're going over, Thornton Township board meeting. Nah, see, see, and trustee Stubbs is a reasonable person, right? But I'm not agreeing with this. I'm not agreeing with this budget. If we're talking about creating a budget that fits for all, let's start with the supervisor's salary. If we're talking about creating a space, creating opportunities, creating growth, if we're talking about creating wealth within the Thornton Township, first, let's start with the supervisor's salary. Let's start there, I think that'd be a good start. Nah, even still, even with the price of things, nah. Because if we held Tiffany Hager, again, accountable, we gotta hope this administration will... we gotta hold this administration accountable. We gotta hold this administration accountable. See, I don't, I don't know, y'all. I don't, I don't, I got, I feel, I feel different. I feel different. Again, this view is everything. We got to say, this view is everything. And the reason I, I heard a little birdie off, they said the reason that the supervisor is even there in South Holland and, um, has been at the township is because Illinois senators are on summer break. And so they're out for summer break. When I seen them numbers, I was upset. Yeah, they finna go right into this meeting. Let's get it. Let's get it. Let's go. They're going right into a meeting right after this. Again, I add it to the stage. A place a- 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 and the great, and the great thing about it, y'all, a- and while I'm so excited about this meeting is because the residents finna, it's about to let their voices be heard. This is why I'm excited about this particular meeting. The residents. Okay, so they let us know that they going on a break, a five-minute break out. They going on a five-minute break, uh, for before they start the next meeting. But I want to say this. They just did two meetings back to back. And not only that, that general fund, this general fund right here. Right here, this general fund and general assistance and road and, road and bridge. The general fund, I believe, is for, uh, the day-to-day. The general assistance is where, you know, the light bill, the gas bill, the mortgage help, the rental assistance, um, the funeral expenses and things like that. And don't get me wrong, the township has some wonderful resources. And if you live within a Thornton Township, make sure that you are using the available use, uh, resources that's available to you. Make sure that you are taking advantage of the resources that's available to you. A lot of times, we have resources in our neighborhood and don't even know that, hey, you can take your child down the street to get, uh, into a soccer program or you can go to a GED class, not even, you know, four or five blocks up the street or yeah. So there's resources in our community. We just have to know what resources that they have available and also know how to access, uh, them resources. I do want to go over here to hear some of their commentary. I am going to do that. I'm gonna take this off the screen. I want to kind of be nosy, if you will. I want to be nosy. I'm finna be nosy. But we finna be nosy because we gonna watch together. I want to see what goes on in the room. See what could happen in the room. What's going on over there? What's going on over there? Hey, yeah. So I called the, I called the township earlier again to just thank you for the hearts missed before. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, so I called Thornton Township today and the reason of me calling was because I had entered, submitted a freedom of information request. And when I tell you, the young lady that answered the phone was nasty to me. She don't know who I am. She don't know what I'm about. She don't know my capabilities. Not saying that I'm somebody and, you know, I can be able to, you know, move mountains, not saying that, but, but you don't know who, who was on this phone with you? And you all snappy. You answer the phone, I irritated. But again, y'all, when I called the village of Dalton, when I called the village of Dalton, I was able to hear, God bless you. You have a blessed day. I was able to hear all of that. I was able to hear all of that, but call that, call, call, call that township. I don't know who over there answering phones. I don't know who over there, uh, taking calls, but they rude. They're rude. What you throwing away there, man? What you throwing away? I'm going to do this on YouTube. Um, I'm not sure if it's going to be. I'm not sure exactly if it's going to post over there to Facebook. At Thornton Township, I want, I am going to open my live up to, um, the residents. If y'all want to come on and share how y'all feel about this meeting tonight, feel free. The link is in the comments. The link is in the comments. Um, on Facebook, I do not believe the link is in the comments. I don't think that it shared on both platforms. So any minute now, they should be getting started with, um, with the board meeting. Again, for, uh, Thornton Township residents, I did put the link in the, uh, comment section on YouTube. If y'all want to come on, share how y'all feel about tonight's meeting, the link is there. Because again, I'm gonna keep talking about it. I don't care. I don't care. I don't care. Napoleon Harris should not be making two hundred and two thousand dollars a year. He should not. And if the board sitting there, somebody need to question it. Grow a spine. Thornton Township board, grow a spine. Let's get it started. The moment we been waiting for, public comments coming, everything. Let's get it. The baby and girl stand up, girl. Let's get it. The moment I've been waiting for, y'all. The moment I've been waiting for. I've been waiting on them to start the meeting. Can y'all hear? Let me know in the comments if you all can hear. The video. Facebook and YouTube, let me know if you all can hear. Just put yes in the comments. Y'all can hear. Make sure we bow our head. Amen. Again, Thornton Township, um, residents, the link is here in the case that you all want to come on and share how you feel about, uh, tonight's meeting and everything going forward. There we go. I'm sorry. I'm leaving it alone. I got a better, uh, sound. Okay, that's what we talking about.
Look to you to not just replace a bad administration, but to make substantial changes to bring this township back to what it was originally built for, to service the needs of those who most need. Frank Zipperelli turned this township into a super PAC. Tiffany Haney made it a park. And now the current supervisor wants to make it a currency exchange to cash his checks. Unfortunately, the electorate have to bear their responsibility because
What a man that. If you ask me. It ain't good enough.
Residents of this township, we are in a dire situation. Property taxes are sky high. Republicans are destroying the national politics and Democrats are destroying the local politics. We've been given budget proposals with no clarity. We still have not seen a forensic audit of finances. And we sit back
Let's talk about that for a moment. A forensic audit was, um, it was needed when Tiffany was in office. But now we don't ask for that forensic audit? Oh, that ain't how it go. What we had. Come on, Jennifer Roberts.
Good evening, everyone.
Wait, what's going on with the camera? I'm sorry, y'all. I'm using somebody else's footage. I don't know what they got going on and why they turning.
What made, what motivated you to seek a supervisor position at Thornton Township? Was it solely for a six-figure compensation or did you feel a sense of entitlement to have the most powerful figure in the Southland? Your substantial township salary allocates tax dollars away from supporting these residents and a lower tax area experiencing rapid population decline.
There's no way in hell that Senator Napoleon Harris' salary is two hundred some thousand dollars. There's no way in hell. Tiffany inherited that salary. So we ain't, we, we, we couldn't, we couldn't say nothing about it. But nigga, you doggone wrong. You doggone wrong, bro. I'm sorry for the Vivian, get it together. Again, let me know where y'all are watching in the comments. Um, tell me I'll talk back. Don't just put on here and watch. You got people watching on from Facebook and YouTube, right? Again, the If you guys want to come on.
Who will listen to our concerns? Supervisor Harris, and I say this with all, with everything that's in me, you still have ample opportunity to prove to us, to prove me incorrect about everything that I just said.
I'm glad people are speaking out. Because we cannot be double-sided. We cannot be, you know, if we hear Tiffany is accountable, we gotta hold him.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't want to come off as negative, uh, but as a person being improved of this new board, I decided I would wait until at least September before publicly criticizing the board. My comment this evening is about the attorneys.
When is somebody gonna tell, uh, Mr. Man that you don't need to be making these salaries? When is somebody gonna say that? When is somebody gonna say that? Come on, Vivian, get your, get, 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 get. Get your camera to right. Get your camera going, my woman of God. I keep saying the link is there if y'all want to come on, share how y'all feel. This is an open discussion, a respectful discussion. Let me know how y'all feel in the comments as well.
That contract stated that the attorneys were hired to provide legal advice and services to the supervisor and slash or, uh, the trustees. It did not specify which side they should advise in the event of a conflict between supervisor and the trustees. However, it was clear that they did not However, it was clear that they did not provide legal advice or services to the residents. Since we are not paying for two township attorneys or perhaps two law firms. Might one of them actually provide legal services or advice to the residents? For example, could residents approach one of our township attorneys for help in wording a ballot resolution to establish a recall mechanism for elected township officials? This issue is of great concern to me after seeing one of the law firms work for the supervisor first in the design and implementation of the caucus in Homewood. And then by doing electoral work, overlooked evidence of the supervisor's residents by discrediting witness who raised the objection. Given that Supervisor Harris is also the person who chooses which judges get on the ballot around here. I am much more afraid of his attorneys than I was ever afraid of Tiffany's groups. It'd be wonderful to see that the township attorneys are here to provide some clarity to the residents. So we have a better understanding of what is being approved during meetings such as this one. Thank you.
Alright, so I just wanna start by reading the Illinois Criminal Code from Cypher Willie. It's seven twenty ILCS five slash twelve dash seven point five. It is illegal to harass, threaten, or intimidate someone online, especially when it's repeated and intentional. When I first started this fight for Dalton, that's where it all began. We didn't know what was going on. When I helped Tiffany Henyrd with her campaign, I believed in her transparency. I thought that she was gonna be a good leader. We all know that failed. When I helped Clean House 2025 with their campaign, it roped me into a movement and it created more division, the unity in our community in the end. Looking back, I believe we all have some self reflecting to do. Some of us got it right, some of us got it wrong. But the most beautiful part was when we all stood together until it wasn't. Now I need to address something serious. Violence has erupted this past Monday. Amir and his daughter were physically assaulted in Harvey after the Harvey Board meeting. And I truly believe that an attack has also been on me because of what happened at the previous township meeting. Everybody was there, everybody knows what happened, so I'm not gonna go into that. So that was not for community, but that was complete intimidation. And I don't, I don't allow it and I don't respect it. Let me be very clear. I am disabled physically, not because I'm faking, but because it is what it is. That's the life that I chose for me and this path that I have. With that being said, I can speak my truth, I can share my opinions. And I have every right to do so, just like anyone else, without being cyberbullying and cyber attack. I have my lab going on now and all I'm doing is getting cyberbullying and cyber attacks. I want this on record.
I have my microphone on the phone, but that's one thing I like about my channel, right?
He's on FMLA, but I know he's a worker here and he's part of the online bullying and the cyber attacks that I am receiving. And I want to also put on notice that investigative advocacy, including serving members, moderators, affiliates, have actually harassed me, spammed me on my page, inserted dangerous energy, and I need this to stop immediately. He is a township employee, so I want this on you guys' record to make sure that when he do come back, that something is said. Because I've already gone and did what I need to do in my opinion to make sure that this stops. But I want to make sure that you guys understand that this is a crime that they're going to be with cyber assaulting. Also, I support Clean House 2025. I believe in that vision. I supported you guys. I believe in your vision. I understand that you guys have been in there sixty-three days. We are going to give you time to get the finances under control because, thank you.
That's bullshit. That's no, no, no. How's y'all giving him time? His salary is at two hundred thousand dollars. No.
I'm sure today it will feel good. But I'm saying it'll be days like this, so. I'll continue with my consciousness, but I don't want you to take it personal. It's a public comment. It's just my vision from the public here. On July fourteenth, remember I was here, he asked the supervisor a few questions. One of his questions were
I'm all in the queue.
Do you think what you're doing is right, being that you were critical of Tiffany? The supervisor answered, I was not critical of anything. Then he asked, considering what these residents have been through, do you think it's a good look for you to be doing some of the same stuff she was doing? The supervisor responded with, I think that's an unfair assessment of what is going on. In the public, I just wanna let you know what our assessment could be from where we sit. Our first assessment is there was a political maneuver made in secret to restore salary we saw blocked before you took the seat. A team was put together of well-known community leaders who were convinced
They full of it.
That what was happening was for the good of the community.
And when it was
Is their credibility that is at risk. You were made aware that there was a vote for a forensic audit. In your own words, no RFP was done, so no auditor was hired. They made no moves to correct that. At the present moment, the finance director from the previous administration still sits in a tamed unchecked seat. With no signs of removal as he just completed a budget. With as many errors or blatantly shows the public where electrically money could be misused. There are still non-approved employees on the township payroll, including ones that lied during the last administration. Events are being approved without disclosing to the public via the agenda of budget. At least the last
And let me say this, I am
To tell the public about a budget. You also committed to them
I am happy the residents speaking up.
Loosely is a quote from the Bible. I will direct you to a more fitting passage. The steps of a good man are ordered by law.
Come on resident. Let's go.
Of your last steps should be assessed. Lastly, to the board. Remember, you all were elected in your own right, your own merit. I want you to remember, why did you agree to join this team? Did you join for status or notoriety? Did you join to be famous or infamous? The choice is yours.
Come on Alicia McCall.
Good evening. I felt some of this same sentiments about Robert Hunt. This is no disrespect to him as a person. I feel like he doesn't have a lot of integrity to me from what I've seen. Seems like he does what he's told to do and that goes right, and that's a hard pill to swallow.
It is. And let me say this, I am very shocked, I am very shocked that Robert Hunt is still employed by the township.
Appreciate that he gave the report.
I am very shocked.
Some questions, but I mean he had time to answer. I don't feel like he's developed himself to just answer freely. Secondly, one thing about the budget, I personally, I do understand what you guys have presented. For me, I think the real comparison comes next budget year, fiscal year, when we actually get to see what was fake compared to what was a lie. Because I feel like there's no baseline. So I mean they're operating kind of without, you know, real structure being in place previously. So I actually understand that and I'm anxious to see next year at this time. This budget that is presented and voted upon compared to the next budget and then what was actual versus what was projected. Because they did explain if certain things aren't used, then that money is not, well, it's reallocated or it's retained. So I understand that. So I'm gonna cut them some slack because of that. And I think that's a more fair comparison next year. Secondly, I wanna say echoing to the cyberbullying, some of the people just yelling, this are the same ones that started this, even with the people they mentioned, started this whole cyberbullying campaign. I wanna say to Babe Solo specifically, Jesse Jones, whatever you call by, please leave my name off of your content. I don't, I mean you're trying to get clicks by creating mess. I've never said I wanted to fight you, never quashed what your name, never did anything other than
Wait, man, this is This is taking a turn.
I'm not sure why, your age especially, you're engaging in this nonsense. Because that's what it is. I've asked on every single platform to refrain from calling my name off, from using my name, from making slander, allegations that aren't true. I've asked on every single platform and I'm asking you now during public comment to refrain. This is what I'm dealing with. But anyway, I just wanted it on record. I didn't say anything. She's relentless. She's obsessed. And I think it's something more to it. But anyway, thank you administration. Sorry I had to take your time with this, but again, I feel like, you know, things that you put in place to
Y'all just to kind of give you some perspective, I think Babe Solo was brilliant.
And I don't wanna be a part of it. And I'm making that public statement right now and asking that a few people, this person specifically, leave my name out of her mess. Thank you.
Oh.
Train us up.
This is, this is just taking a turn.
Just real short, I just wanted to say, I would, I do like the idea, if you could change a little bit more time for the vote.
This just took a turn, did y'all? Wait a minute. Alicia McCall, wait, what happened with you and Babe Solo?
We just have so much stress and there's a lot of
Wait a minute.
This trust. And that's part of what's going on, you know? We want, the public wants to believe and trust in your government. We need it so bad. And so that's part of what, that's part of what's going on. And as far as, you know, I'm sorry I wasn't able to pay super close attention to the, to the numbers and everything in the
That just took a turn, did y'all see?
But when you're looking at the budget.
And, and, and this is another thing. Because if we're fighting for, if everybody is fighting for the same transparent, better government. We can't be getting on YouTube crashing out and getting into it with each other. We, we, we can't. That ain't, that ain't what better government is.
There's changes in snap happening.
That's just me.
Coming for relief from the township. And so, you know, you could just kind of think about that when you're looking about putting your figures together. And of course our tax assessor. That, that is just so critical to the needs of this township. I can't begin to tell you
I agree.
What a blessing it is to handle that. So, thank you.
Good, yeah, yeah, very good.
I wanna know is, uh, so and so there.
Good evening everyone. All residents or township members. I first want to acknowledge all of the different emotions and feelings that everyone has here and have been having for quite some time. Which is why I wanna keep reminding you that there are free mental health supports available. No matter what you're going through, whether you have a diagnosis.
Well, she wasn't playing. She wasn't. You came up here to speak up, you. Like delivery.
Our event healing happens here with this past Friday. We had a lot of different requests that are located right here in Portland Township. If everybody was accessed, a lot of the providers who were there also provide free workshops. Stress management, healing circles, peace circles. We had a lead therapist just sleeping for by rooms. We had sound bath healing and meditation.
I'm sorry, I had to let that comment out on screen.
We also had people there for, if you had questions about your property taxes. She was actually doing paperwork to help you get your property taxes in a definitive order. I have presented information a lot and I'm kind of disappointed that more people than top four townships
Advertizing.
I did. It was everywhere. So it gets bombarded about all those political things that's going on. And so I post every other day on all the platforms, but it is
And that's bad because it is, y'all got resources and it's like, you know. You're not knowing about it because of the mess that's going on.
To manage our own building and where our focus is. So I'm here to offer again, I would like to reflect the meaning with this board to capitalize the services and the partnerships that my agency has developed to break these things right here in Portland Township. It could be in this building, it could be adult library, it could be a South Hall library. Wherever we have the space, we will bring that support to anyone in this room. Anyone who was listening, anyone who was watching. Because the stress goes beyond the politics of today.
That's right.
This day's happening with our youth. This day happening in our homes. This day happening with our family. And we have to have
I agree.
To process those things and to get the support that we need. So again, I am here, I am available. The resources are here. We will bring them to you. You will not have to travel far. We will make them accessible. We will make sure that they're affordable. And they are for all ages. We actually partnered with the Southland Justice Council to make sure we provide free services to our youth who are awful in mental health crisis. For various reasons, short term, long term, situational. That I slowly think that we need to bring here to Portland Township. While we're talking about bringing the resources back to mental health, please consider the offer that they're making.
Love that, love that. I love that. I love that.
Okay, Brian.
I just wanted to be clear, even though I am a registered Democrat, no, I did not endorse this current slate to be the township board. Not personally, because some of you I speak with personally and it's, as someone previously has said, this is all about professional criticism and about how you all are doing your public jobs. I, to my surprise, endorsed the Republican candidates, but it was mostly because this, the Democratic slate really had no debates or dialogue. There were no plans for, no plans for ethics reforms. Basically, the platform was, let's just return to what we did during the Zuparelli days. And my position is that, that's not good enough. I grew up during the Zuparelli days, you know, going to Homewood and all this. I saw all the, some of the bases may have changed, but it was all about unfortunately, people getting paid. Indiana's gonna help people and give services along the way, but that's not good enough anymore. We have lost so many residents in Indiana, to areas further west and further south. Because people are, they just, they can't take all the tax burden. I cannot communicate this to you enough. You're not there to enrich yourselves. You're there, we need the services. No one's against the services, but people can't afford to live in their homes. How many more people do you wanna see move to Indiana? I mean, we will not survive the region. I, when I fought it for it, I was telling my kids, hey, you're gonna come back to Harvey, you know, and help. And they were like, no babe, we're gonna get out of here. We don't even wanna be in this area. So I mean, that's what we're facing. I wanted to bring up the WGN report about salaries, you know, about those being too high, so that needs to be addressed. What is the legality of those salaries and those issues? Instead of a tax refund, I was
I'm glad everybody's bringing up the salaries.
And then decrease everybody's tax rate and you don't have to worry about a refund. For the travel, this reminds me of District 152. I brought up these same points and this is also on that board. Again, I'm not against professional development, but who's going? What's the cost? And why can't you do some remote learning? Like why, why do we, do you guys have to go to these hotels and, you know, what are you paying? For the credit card policy, what is that? All the resolutions should be posted on
I will say that, we have a plan, though. What do they want to do about it? If any of them want a credit card, Napoleon Harris has a credit card. These are the questions, these are the stuff that's not paying us.
For months, saying that we had to clean up and figure out where all the money is. But now that you're in office, you're not doing that. You're rushing, 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 rushing to go and spend money and it's not right. I suggest in the meantime, if you do need more money, just take it for some of the salaries you've increased. And my final question is, I did here in Harvey, Illinois, you can always come visit my house on Ashland Avenue. Do you? And my final question is, I did hear in Harvard, Illinois, you can always come visit my house on Ashland Avenue. Do you?
Thank you. Uh, that's how you're family.
Ooh, come on, Mr. Danley. Did y'all hit the clerk and her little attitude?
Please, everyone. This is sort of my reintroduction to this forum, uh, because I've been away for a while. Um, it feels better, but we have a ways to go yet. Uh, I'm sort of, actually, I'm very disappointed that the, uh, the, uh, Lindsey Boyer idea has been mostly just, appears to be ignored by company months.
Yeah, again, why not have an audit done?
Not to just drag things out from the old, this first.
I, I, let's just be real. Why not have an audit done? We're able to see exactly where the money went. What was being bought? What was being spent? Where's the, uh, 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 money, where's this ma- mismanaging funds? We don't know these. We don't know these answers. We won't get the answers because they don't want to do it harder.
And there seems to be a lot of gaps in that. These funds don't seem to be, a lot of these funds don't seem to be verified. Uh, I'm all for moving forward, but we have to do it in a smart way. Also, I noticed that, uh, Mr. Hunt, saying he was coming back, right? That's took the long way around. Okay, I, I heard him going through a list of questions, and he informed me that those questions came from the National Journal. And not from, uh, no, through you guys. I think that between the meetings that are going to start up, we're going to have two, two a month, I guess, when the season, summer ends. At one of those meetings, we should have some type of Q and A.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, this is a communication issue as well as a financial issue. And as long as it appears that the questions are not being vetted properly or that be selectively read.
They're not giving true.
Mistrust, we're going to waste a lot of.
They're not giving true answers.
Okay?
Nah.
We all are getting tired of that. There are a lot of questions that need to be answered, and this is the end.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm making sure that I share this live to all of groups that I am. In as well.
Qualify to be here. It may have to lay some people off or whatever. How are we going to do that if we don't know exactly how much money we have and do it?
Exactly.
That becomes unreasonability of this stature.
Exactly. I've been saying the same thing.
We are, we are kings and queens. We have to stop acting like partners and gestures. I've been doing it now. You guys have been getting much, much improvement of what we had in the last four years. But we still have a ways to go. We have to look each other.
There's a long way to go.
Be honest with each other. So if.
There's a long way to go. Let's not say.
I don't think I'm going to do that because any other reason other than for the residents, we need to evaluate your position in this, in this office.
Should be on the line.
That's right.
Again, if there are any Thornton Township residents, if you are on, watching right now, the link is in the comments, the link to join, to get on. You ain't got to show your face if you don't want to. Ain't have to do none of that. If you want to get on and share how you feel about this board meeting, you're free to do so. The link is here.
No, you know, uh, public and politics and all of that and how things are run. Um, however, I think it's, it comes upon this administration to be as responsible or even more so with our taxpayer dollars and have the same level of fiscal responsibility as a for-profit organization would have. Um, this brings me to the food pantry. Um, when I looked at the, the budget, there was a $1.0 million dollar line item with really no explanation of what it is and what it's made up of. Um, but even further I concern is the overall 4.368 million dollar cost of food pantry.
Yes.
This is a big amount. It's huge.
It is.
Based on my math and the number of meals that on the website that get served or boxes, comes to about eighty-seven dollars. Uh, to provide a, a box of food that's worth twenty-five dollars. And I'm being generous because I know it's in those boxes. Uh, even the US government continued making pennies when they realized it costs three dollars to make a penny, right? Because it's not efficient, it's a waste, right? And I'm not suggesting that with a little mental health issue. It provides a vital service and even more so with all the political climate changes. People are going to be blind on it. So I'm not suggesting that. I just want the numbers to make sense because right now, math ain't math. And so my, my suggestion is that, and I understand, you know, some of the.
What's it say? The math ain't math.
You know, with inflation, with this political, um, but I think we need to really take a look at the food pantry, the processes, the financial, take a deep dive. I'm sure there are many opportunities. We don't bring no cost down.
That's right.
Math starts with math.
Yes.
I tried to twist this time off the top. It doesn't make sense to you. Um, you know, and, and what that does is, as you know, any increase like that, it's maybe talks about.
The woman at the house, they subtract the twist, the math, and the math ain't just math. The math ain't math and Napoleon Harris.
So, and that impacts our ability to build generational wealth.
I don't have any, I see, I mean, people online watching right now. Again, if there's any Thornton Township residents, you, let me know how you feel. Let me know in the comments, y'all, y'all talk back to me. Let me know in the comments how y'all feel. Do y'all agree with the budget that you asked? Do y'all not agree with the budget that you passed? Are they showing accountability? Are they showing transparency?
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, I was a little late. Will I be?
I understand. We have chart one of this thirty minutes left. Thank you.
So I believe they're going back to the regular board meeting. Um, public comments is over with.
And he looked around, I guess if he didn't say that. He said that.
Can y'all show, wait a minute, yeah, y'all ain't even showing us what's going on. Man, we can hear perfectly. They approved the funds, revving budgets. So I believe, uh, Vivian is going to adjusting to her, uh, to her lot. I heard somebody say you get what you're up for. And nobody adapting to nothing, nobody, nobody, nothing. They're just passing everything this man want to pass. They just approving everything. They approving all these budgets. This is, I believe, the second budget they didn't approve so far. While y'all approving, y'all need to go back and approve and re, and, 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 and do some amendments to the supervisor's salary. While we in an approving mood, go do some, go. And re, uh, amend the supervisor's salary. Go and do that. So they on i- item line number D. I want to see what amendments they make, they made to the credit card ordinance. I really want to see what, um, amendments they made in the credit card, because I remember Tiffany and the last board was just going through so much about credit cards. But the way Thornton Township set up right now is that, um, they not responding to four-year requests. I submitted a four-year request, uh, request to Thornton Township. Let me go to my, let me go to my, 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 my email. Because I haven't gotten nothing back from the Thornton Township yet. See, as we can see, Dalton, Dalton responded. Sure y'all, Dalton responded. Dalton responded. But that township, it's like at this point, Napoleon Harris telling me, nah, I ain't fucking with. That's what I'm, that's what I'm taking from it. That's what I'm taking from it. And then I've been reading Tittle and the groups and stuff, people been saying all the time. This administration is not responding to four-year requests. That's like, nobody adapting to nothing. Isn't this how they got in the, this isn't this how the last board got into the nonsense that they got into? Because nobody was objecting when Tiffany first got there. Nobody was objecting to anything. Everybody was just approving everything this lady was talking about. I don't piss me off.
I require women affirmative, the motion cares.
I don't agree with him. I don't agree with him, y'all.
I also like to say.
Yeah, he is.
People always talk about people coming together and being on one accord. Sometimes, as individuals who take on this public, public, uh, office, they walk in wonder why people do it. And they say, well, why people do it? Because.
Y'all say he funny. Yeah, he is.
Is that, people say, well, if I'm not, they just representing. No, it's not representing. We're communicating. And when you communicate, you don't need to go out and have all this dug discourse. Uh, people are using this as clickbait. And I want to put some business on this. Uh, we have a lot of people that come here for their own entertainment purposes so they can be clicked on internet. And this is not what we're going to do to come up. And no, we're going to speak to the business of handling township business each and every time.
Y'all girl. You're talking about a clickbait. Were you bringing in two hundred thousand dollars, over two hundred thousand dollars? As a first-time supervisor? Nigga, I'm offended. You got damn right. It's not about clickbait. It's about bringing awareness to your jackass. It pisses me off, Napoleon Harris. No, about the football. It just pisses me off. He got his life, don't he? I ain't tipping you. Oh, they doing it for clickbait.
And those are just real realities that we have to live with.
You talking about the people doing it for clickbait, but you bringing in over two hundred thousand dollars as a first-time supervisor? How? How is you bringing in this money and nobody on the board? This is my problem. How is you bringing in this extra money and nobody on the board is saying? This is my problem, how is you bringing in this type of money and nobody on the board has said anything? I'm not gonna say they haven't said anything, but so far this week, today, we ain't heard a damn thing. We heard the residents speak the fuck up.
Someone said, they said, well, if you do this
Napoleon, don't piss me off.
What is to be said for people that agree?
Don't piss me off, let me get pregnant, water, he gonna piss me off. I take offense to what you say, goddammit.
And bringing that up, like, we handle ourselves professionally, and we get ridiculed for them with that. So it's almost like, what do we want? But I can tell you this, the impact and the letters and the comments
All we want is change, and all we want is accountability, everyone is a better government, all we want is decrease the salary.
Approve, well, let's face it, the realization is, we're not gonna need that much. That should be announced, and for people to come, every week, to try to create a narrative that's not there to continue to uh make
The fact of the matter is that this is not a narrative.
It's really embarrassing.
Because he keep saying it's a narrative, he gonna piss me off, y'all.
I understand that for. And I'm gonna continue to work with each and every person that's genuinely coming to work on behalf of the residents.
Yes, he gonna piss me off, but now I got to pull up the receipts, cause he gonna piss me off. If we're talking about it, he's talking about, we were here to better the community, just look at the community.
Not about previous person, we moving forward. And in order to do that, we have to work together, because we were duly elected by the resident, the residents of Thornton Township to do a job, and we plan on doing just that. So I thank you for the comments, I thank you for your uh public participation. I would just ask that you uh give the courtesy and respect to not just myself, but to the trustees and everybody in your respective roles, just trying to do the best job they can possibly do.
Let's pause them here, it's trash, because if we're talking about what we're doing for the residents, if we're talking about how we're trying to better the residents, if we're talking about uh, 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 growth and development with the residents, that's not, that's not the case, that's not the case, bro.
We lost uh Gilbert Gonzalez, the dad of our dear friend and trustee Chris Gonzalez. So could anyone rise for a moment, aside for Gilbert and Gonzalez?
I'm gonna put this in the chat. I'm putting this in the chat. I believe that link, I believe that link should take you to the new payroll, the first three payroll. This link should take you to the first three payroll.
We just want you to know, as
Since Supervisor Harris has been elected. Look at it, look, look at it for yourself.
And the values that he still bring, uh, to making
And on another note, and while they're talking about the sensitive subject, my heart, my heart, like condolences, goes out to trustee Gonzalez. Um, I lost my, I lost my, um, well, he was a father, I lost my dad, uh, Bishop John Henson, and August tenth, twenty twenty. And it's not a day that goes by that I don't think about my dad. And so, my heart goes out to him.
To leave comments, questions, and uh try to get back to the approach, to the approach.
They really do.
Ask those questions officially if we can. Uh, as was stated, we still going through a ton of information, forty's of things that were left behind for months, and almost summer here, so please be patient with us, uh, we're working to expedite that process as quickly
For the ones that have not already done so, if you have not hit that subscribe button, make sure you do it. Help us get our channel out, stay connected, stay informed, stay engaged.
Who should be hired, who should be fired, but that is my decision along with this force to do that thing. And if we wanna do the best job we can, be sure to be there for the right people, in the right positions, uh, to lead this township forward.
Hmm.
So with that being said, thank you for your time, and I ask for a motion to adjourn. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Trustee Stubb makes a motion to adjourn, second by trustee Stan.
They'll leave it, they'll leave it. But this, this, this is my thing, and I wanna show this, I wanna show this, and I am gonna pull up, pull it up on the screen, because he just lied. He just lied, he said our, our goal is the residence, our goal i- i- is the residence. Well, Mr. Supervisor, it don't look like your goal is the residence. He- he- here it is, it don't look like your goal is the residence, because if your goal was the residence right here, why you bringing in these type of, on, on May thirty of twenty twenty five allegedly, seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars and seventy seven cents, five thirty, twenty twenty five, five thousand one hundred dollars. Six thirteen, twenty twenty five, seven thousand eight hundred and five dollars and seventy seven cents. Six twenty seven, twenty twenty five, six hundred dollars. Six twenty seven, twenty twenty five, seven thousand eight hundred projected, two hundred, two thou- two hundred, two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and two cents, how? How? How the hell is you bringing in these type, in it, how? How would you bring in these type of numbers? And this is your first term, and so when you sit there and say that people want clicks and views, and people want likes and 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 for clickbait, no! It's not for, it's not for clickbait, I can see if we're making up these narratives, but we're not, because the numbers is there. We didn't ask you to bring in these type of numbers. When you got in there, we thought you was gonna do what you was supposed to be doing. This is what the numbers is. What the number said right there. And we're not talking about numbers that, oh, this is what it's gonna look like in, in two months from now, this is what it's gonna look like three months from now, now, nigga, you brought in this money on five thirty, twenty twenty five, just like the rest of the board. How projected salary starting at thirty thousand dollars, how? You're a new trustee. How, right here? How, you're a new trustee? How? And I'm not just gonna call his name out, Maria Bott. Let's go to the rest of them. Christopher Gonzalez? How did you bring in thirty thousand? This is that, the number said next to your name. How would you bring in this type of money? And, 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 and this is, this is what cra- this is what's crazy about this. Uh, we see where, you see this eleven thousand? That's what it's supposed to be. That's the number it's supposed to be. That's what you supposed to be looking at. Because this the bullshit, so, 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 so Supervisor Harris, when you talk about clicks and views, when you talk about clickbait, when you talk about uh, uh, people just wanna start narratives? First respond back to our Freedom of Information requests. First start doing that, direct somebody in your administration to respond back to the Freedom of Information Act, because when I put in my request, when I was told, oh, the clerk office handles that. Do you think the clerk, the clerk office responded? Do you think that the clerk office, oh, oh, we'll get back to you? No, Dalton did. The House Administration did. So when you talk about clicks and views, let's click on this. Don't talk about it. Another, Byron Stanley. Why is your projected salary at thirty thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty dollars and seventy nine cents? Uh, Byron Stanley, why you, why is your, we see it right here, new trustee, why is your salary at thirty thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty dollars and seventy nine cents? Why? Why? And then let me talk about it seems like only, only person that's really doing, uh, bringing in something that they probably supposed to be bringing in is, 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 is the uh clerk, but then, but then, but oh, but then. I'm gonna have to do a fact check concerning the clerks as far as her, and what she supposed to be bringing in. But don't sit on there, uh, and, 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 and try to paint this narrative as if you just being picked on. No, goddammit, we calling for accountability. And, 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 and these numbers, this is the numbers that, we're not talking about paychecks that, oh, they're gonna get it next month. Paycheck that's gonna come next week, no, we talking about paychecks that has already hit their account. Excuse me. But then, that's not even, not only, not only that. Let's go to the Chief of Staff, Mr. Carla. And from my understanding, Carla Cotton Brewus, 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 whatever her name is. But Carla, she's the Chief of Staff here at the township, but also, he's Chief of Staff for his governor's seat, I mean, here for his senate seat. So girl, you just checking her bad, basically, all y'all just checking her bad. And so when we talk about, oh, we doing this for, for the community, and we such for the community, and the community need this, and we're making sure the community need that, now that's bullshit. And we just gotta start calling it like it is, it's bullshit. These salaries don't make no sense. And I'm glad, I'm very glad that the residents called it out. I'm very glad that the residents are still being vocal, I'm very glad that the residents are still holding them accountable, I'm very glad that the residents are still applying the pressure. But the sad part about it, we still got three and a half more years to go. Next year in the budget, what is salary gonna look like then? He already at two hundred and two, the number is right there. Let's convert this to a table, let's look. Let's look, I got time today. I promise y'all, I was getting off, I promise y'all, I was getting ready to get off, and I was gonna be good, but this negro, this negro of a supervisor, let's look at that, look at that gross pay. Look, let, let's put it in the, i- 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 in one of these, in this form, look at the gross pay. These are payments that he has already brought in. The highlight. Napoleon. But this is Napoleon. Nigga, you already brought in a, you already in chapter bad. And, 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 and my thing is that we seen when Tiffany got appointed, we seen that when she got in the board, we're just approving, just approving, just approving, just approving. But nigga, don't you ever stick your ass out there and talk about, oh, we just doing it for clicks and clickbait. When we got the proof, when you can't even have your team respond to a four year request. When I called the township this morning, and they was just so nasty to me. They were nasty. Whoever answered the phone, they were nasty. She seemed as if she had an attitude, she said as if, if, if somebody had bothered her, she was irritated, she didn't wanna be there, that's not my fault. But, another thing, Robert Hunt just said today that there is a hundred and fifty one people almost employed by this township. I don't see a hundred and fifty one people name up here. I see the media. Let's look at Robert Hunt, let's look at what Robert Hunt bringing in. He bringing in a bad, but from my understanding, he have the credentials for that. But what's your credentials? Don't take it out on you. What you mean by that? I'm kinda lost. I'm kinda lost. Again, if there's anybody from Thornton Township that's on here right now, I see you all, I see how many people we got watching right now. The link is in the comments. The link is in the comments, come on, share how you feel, share your thoughts. The link is in the comments. The proof is there. The proof is there. There's no way he making this money. And nobody's saying nothing about it. That's the problem that I have. Hopefully somebody say something soon, hopefully it ain't too late. Because the road, and the way they going, it ain't good. It ain't good at all, I promise y'all it ain't. The way they going and the right, and, and, the, the, the rate they going, it ain't good. It ain't good. It ain't good. Again, the link is in the comments, let me know how y'all feel. The lady that answered the phone, let me come back on the screen, the lady that answered the phone when you called earlier was nasty, man, she was nasty. That lady was nasty, and I don't understand it, cause girl, I'm just calling to figure out what's going on with my Freedom of Information request. By law, you have to answer it, either you gonna deny it or approve it, but by law, you have to answer it. I called to ask for the clerk, the clerk wasn't there. So we'll be talking. It's time to get your shit together, Senator Harris, and if not, we got a problem. We got a problem because you ran on accountability, we have a problem because you ran on transparency, we have a problem because residents wants to know why in the hell is your salary the way it is. But I don't think we'll get an answer. I'm gonna reach out to Senator Harris, administrat- Supervisor Harris Administration, again, see if we can get a question, and see if we can get a comment on his spending, not only on his spending, but on his salary. I feel that the people should know. Until next time, y'all, put my heart to yours, stay safe.